November 22, 2022. Inviting in today's regular session, the City Planning and Development Coordinator relative to the submitted draft of the Executive Legislative Agenda.
Rules are suspended. We acknowledge the presence of Mr. Willie Prilias.
Madam Chair, po. The document that we submitted was put together by my colleagues at the City Planning and Development Office. We prepared some slides to summarize the highlights of the document. So if it is okay with you, your honor, may I defer to my colleague Trish Albios, who is more familiar with it.
Good morning po, Madam Chair and to the honorable members of the Sangguniang Panglunsod. So, ayan po.
Paki-baba ang bengayon na...
Okay, po. Next slide, po. So, just a quick briefer po. The planning workshop was conducted on June 25, 2022 at Primus Hotel and Resorts. So it was attended by 69 participants comprised of elected officials, department heads, project unit heads, representatives, and staff. So, and they were grouped in nine clusters: Environment, Infrastructure, and under Social, Health, Education, Constituency Assistance, and Shelter; and then Economic Services, Institutional Development, Procurement and Finance, Public Safety, Transportation and Traffic Management. So we followed the DILG memorandum circular 2019-114 on formulating the Ella and flashed on the screen are the contents. So shown on the screen po is the LGU vision statement. So Naga and Maungbang lugar. It is anchored from Maungbang lugar statement and the ambition natin 2040, which is their tagline is matatag, maging hawa, at panatag na buhay. So by 2030, Naga City shall be a recognized model of a healthy city and this shall be enabled by people-centered development and collaborative governance. So the development challenges based on the city's CDP 2022-2030 can be classified into five classifications po: developmental challenges, spatial challenges, social challenges, resilience and political economy challenges, and internal or institutional challenges. So this shall be answered po through reducing poverty incidents, improving access to basic services under spatial, managing urban growth, and improve access to basic services. For social challenges, need to increase health facilities and decreasing poverty, and establishing a scientific way of assessing data to aid the city's decision-making process, and then implementation and completion rate of PPAs. So the goal is for the city to urge to create and implement responsive programs and policies to achieve its vision of a healthy city enabled by people-centered development and collaborative governance. So this shall be done to developing responsive programs that are accessible and to sustain the economic growth of the city to create realistic projects and programs to encourage collaborative governance. This shall be done through reviewing the devolution transition plan, collaboration with NGOs, POs, and COs, and then implementing better monitoring system scheme. So for the priorities po, the legislative branch po shall continue to review its existing ordinances as to its applicability and efficiency. They shall continue to oversee the implementation of all ordinances enacted by the Sangguniang Panglunsod, ensure the quality of all enacted ordinance, ensure that legislations will address the needs of the city, and continue to safeguard the autonomy of the legislative branch while maintaining a positive collaborative and cooperative relation with the executive. Next slide, po. So the executive priorities are based on the Ateneo de Naga University's survey results, which is the top five problems that a local government unit should address. So traffic congestion, lack of livelihood and job opportunities, high cost of hospitalization, road conditions, and then garbage problems. So through traffic congestion and road conditions, we shall alleviate traffic congestion in the city's urban core through construction of bypass roads and creating alternative roads. That will improve the city road network. For lack of livelihood and job opportunities, we shall strengthen the business in the tourism sector, support the local economy through the establishment of the Investment Promotions Office to oversee all potential investment and business endeavors. For the garbage problem, invest in waste management facilities. For the itemized PPAs po, shown on the screen is a summary of the PPAs under both legislative and executive. So majority of the proposed PPAs and legislations are focused on social services, which accounts to 36%, accounting to a total of 213 PPAs and legislations combined. So there are a total of 591 PPAs po, and then majority of the PPAs and legislations are geared towards social services, which has 213 or 36%, followed by economic services, 131 PPAs or 22%, and then infrastructure with a total of 60 PPAs at 10%. So next, okay. For the legislative branch po, majority of the proposed legislations are geared towards social services at 40%, followed by economic and public safety, transportation, and traffic management at 18 and 17%. So what you'll see on the next slide are two methods we've made in order to get a better overview of the list of PPAs. Next slide, po. So we utilized a cloud generator and did a manual sorting or classification to determine the patterns and the like. So whereas due to the limitation of the cloud generator, we opted to do a manual sorting to verify the illustrations produced by the cloud generator. So as pointed out in the previous slide, social services account for 40% of the total proposed legislation. So the image on your left po is the result of the list of PPAs under social services, which reveals that health in general is one of the prominent legislations proposed under social services. However, the table on your right reveals the result of our manual sorting, which reveals that constituency assistance is by far more eminent than health, accounting for 71% of the total proposed legislations under social services. So it is important to note that the legislation proposed under constituency assistance aims to support programs geared towards assisting various sector of the society, including youth, solo parents, PWDs, and the likes. Next slide, po. So likewise, under the economic services, which follow the social service, accounting for 18% of the total proposed legislation. So given the nature of the sector, a bulk of the legislations are geared towards trade, commerce, and industry, followed by tourism, with emphasis on the people's mall or the market, and business and culture. Next slide, po. Under executive branch, likewise with the analysis made under the legislative, majority of the proposed PPAs under executives are also geared towards social services and economic services. So with the social services accounting for 35% and economic services for 23% of the proposed PPAs of the executive branch. Next slide, po. So using the same method of analyzing PPAs, our analysis revealed that compared to the legislative branch, which mainly focuses on the delivery of services to its constituents, the majority of the proposed PPAs of the executive branch are geared towards the improvement of administration or management, leading to a better delivery of services. So this includes the need to increase manpower through hiring additional personnel or the creation of a new plantilla. Second, establishing linkages between organization and agencies. Third, the creation of councils, task force, or organizations to support the implementation of services. So as for the economic services under the executive branch, this accounts for 23% of the total PPAs. So majority of the PPAs under economic services are aimed toward the construction of facilities. So this includes new constructions, repairs, renovations, expansions, improvements, and the likes. So in addition to the proposed construction of facilities under the economic sector, a bulk of PPAs are also geared towards providing assistance in reference to employment in the form of job fairs, placements, and the likes. So since the Ella is a tool for identifying priority programs both agreed upon the executive and the legislative branches, so based on the data provided, both legislative and executive branch focalize on the social and economic services. However, it is important to note that emerging need to address issues and concerns in reference to administration and management, such as the need to upgrade systems through digitalization and digitalization, and the need to increase technical personnel under the social services, as well as the need to secure facilities under the economic services to ensure the delivery of service. So, ayan po. If you would want to check the manual sorting or analysis po, we can show then po the Excel file of the manual analysis of the PPAs.
Honorable Del Castillo.
So this is the summary of, or the result rather, of our workshop conducted at Primus till sometime in June. So what is the action being sought from the Sangguniang Panglunsod on this particular matter?
The action requested, your honor, if the document is okay with you, is for the Sangguniang to adopt the Ella so that it can become part of the regulations and policies of the city government.
So what is being sought is the formal adoption of this result of our workshop sometime in June 2022. So big summarize lang si mga priorities and the need...
Kung ano si nagluwas duman during the ano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will yield to my colleagues who need to have a minute.
Okay, any other queries, comments from the other members with regards to the presentation? We thank the lady for the presentation. Honorable Kylie Trifulca.
The presentation, Madam Chair. May I just ask if there are urgent or independent actions needed to be prioritized at the moment?
At this point, your honor, if you will need more time to go through it. I think we have time. Although, on the other hand, last week po nagpaalaup na si DILG kung ano ng status ng Ella because after we conducted the workshop, nag issue siya ng guidelines. That's why it took us some time to put this together. Then may mga additional requirements siya, for example, itong devolution plan. So on the one hand, we will appreciate kung i-adapt na po in ini, but if you still need some time to go through it, I think we still have a window to do it.
Honorable Perez.
Thank you, madam. First, I must admit that I have not fully observed the particular, the other particular issues or details with the report made so that I can make out of the salient points of this Ella, except that, except the finding that both the executive and the legislative departments are one in focusing on economic and, what is that, economic and social services. Would Mr. Prilias make some or point out some salient points of that report? Or that we may be furnished copies of such report?
Sige po. The Counselor Perez is correct in pointing that out. That was also borne out of the presentation that both the executive and the legislative agree on this. So ang nagluwas po duman na mga priorities, for instance, is to ensure that the city will focus its attention on creating livelihood opportunities to address the needs of the constituencies of the city. So ang kaiba po dyan is kaipuhan pa kusugun kang siyudad ang sa iyang internal mechanisms and ang sa iyang bureaucracy so that it will be able to deliver quality services to the people. And we can also link that to the executive priorities identified in one of the slides. Resulta po inikatong Ateneo survey, which identified traffic congestion, delivery of health services as priority. So nagluas man po siya duman sa kuyan. Workshop na giniribu ka tong siyam na sektor na nagturuwang tuwang. Sumailin tapo si ditali duman sa document. So this is a faithful documentation of the outputs that both the executive and legislative came up with in that Primus workshop.
Honorable Del Rosario.
Thank you. Salamat, Sir Willie, and to the lady that presented. I just noted, Madam Chair, na 'yung caption niya legislative, then ang ano niya is, 'yung summary niya is majority of the proposed legislations are geared toward social services 40%, then nasa ibaba, economic and public safety, transportation. Probably, Madam Chair, because bako gabos sa tuya nakaparticipate duman sa Ella, sa Primus. Diba? I think only a handful of us were there. By Vice Mayor, Councilor Joe, Councilor Omar, I think siguro si Councilor Oyng pipira lang. Kaya iyo lang to si nakareplex majority, ba? Majority?
Oo, majority yao ang kita duman. Ang nagtukaw kita duman sa mga...
Sa kanya-kan. Kasi, Madam Chair, ang may ano kaya eh. Ang framework of presentation, may ano eh, may let me very blunt about this, may bias. May bias. Kasi ang big reflex dyan, si mga big po proposed ang legislations. Ngunyan, kung tinanakita ng birds' overview, yun ang trabaho dapat kang planning, na ini dapat ang magiging direction kang city, and we need legislations for this, hindi dapat nagmanipis kita ng sa'to 'yung mga legislations. Hababaon, Madam Chair, ang sa environmental, only 4.3. But sabi niya, iyo lang yan ang klaseng legislations. Ang percentage ka legislations na naisip tapo environment. For example, institutional development. Kada ko kitang gustong ayusin sa institutional development, sa infrastructure, Madam Chair. Kada ko kitang gusto. So siguro, Mr. Prilias, next year sa Ella, mag forward kita, mag... We think out of the box, we provide the Sangguniang, with the... 'yung pigihiling tan na magiging direction kang city, and we need these legislations para kami, magsabay kami duman sa sektoral concerns. Tangarig mag reflex sa... Ako, Madam Chair, am supporting na ma-approve na rin ko dyan, pero siguro next year, o sa sunod na mga planning, ano ni, ibahunta ang perspective kang kwenta. Tangarig, ang Sangguniang mas maging more responsive kita sa kuyan kang, sa executive, sa balance of the executive and legislative. Igwa ko nahiling na sa wrong slide. I came late, I'm sorry, I came late. Ang sarong slide na mentioned duman, I just don't know kung ano. Ayan, 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 okay. Pwede pa balikan ito, pwedeng balikan. Yan. Majority of the proposed PPAs and legislation are focused on social services. So 213 PPAs and legislations, data na summarize kung pera dyan si, iisip tang for these sectors. Kaya ang big ano ko, Igdi, Madam Chair, move forward kita duma sa sarop pa, sa sunod, sa sunod. Sa sunod pa, sa sunod pa. Bako, bako, itong naka tabular, tabular. Itong naka-table, itong sarop, itong sarop. Yan, yan, okay. So Igdi, Madam Chair, dapat na kwenta, nakaisip kita ng iba pang mga paaghi na pwedetang, maka-encourage kita ni, ada more inputs. So I think it's the direction setting. Probably, not only from the mayor, but the City Planning and Development Office could give us a comprehensive direction setting on next exercise takang si Ella. Tangarig maging mas responsive, mas proact, proactive ang Sangguniang Panglunsod. Itas kami, kan sa mo 'yung Vice Mayor, kan si samoyang mga sektoral na mga concerns. Tangarig makokontribute kami, Madam Chair, sa, tangarig makasabay kita. Allow the ball na ining presentation ta, medyo kaipuan talang na dagdagan pa, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario. If you remember, I asked you for your legislative agenda, and I submitted it during the Ella. Big basa ko nga ni, itong mga proposed nindu, na legislative, itong mga legislative proposals nindu, based on your committees, and we submitted it during the Ella. That's why when you, yun, you sit with the group na concern sa nindu, saro sa mga pigtaunindong input duman, si mga sinadmit nindu during the, itong nanginagad ko si legislative agenda ta. So, ano, following your line of thought, Honorable Del Rosario, perhaps kung baka mga, igwa ka mong mga legislative measures na mayo sa committee nindu, na daiman ko ta ito ang interest nindu, baka gusto man nindu ilaoog na sa susunod na submission. I'm going to ask you again, pagka-ilaog ta, to submit your legislative agenda. Ano si mga balak nindu is ipasar ng mga ordinance sa base sa mga nahihiling nindu, as sinamamatay ang nindu sa mga constituentes. Bako lang kung ano si copy ni kaput mo. Halimbawa sa environment, focus ka lang sa environment. Baka may nahihiling mangka mong iba na nahihiling nindu mas mapapakarha pa ang estado kang mga, mga yaundig diyo sa Naga. So I hope that you will, based on your suggestion, we can do that. Para pagtukaw ta sa Ella, talagang mailalaog na si gusto tang ilaoog, na aaksyonan man kang mayor, sa executive. Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario.
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you for the reflection. I request, Sir Willie, na 'yung next presentation ta, maripain ta ang presentation, na bakong, na medyo, oo, mas maanot ang presentation.
Yes, your honor, we'll do that. Pero ang kuyan lang, ang commitment na, ang pwedeng pangaputan is that we were faithful as regards the inputs submitted by each of the councilors. We gave sufficient time, maski po duman sa mamayo, na iiba, as documented under chapter 5. Maski po, iba-iba si mga committees o mga clusters na yaunig di, basta sinumiter kang, member kang Sangguniang, we made sure na kaibaanan ito. In regard to the approach, we will take into consideration the suggestion. Baka may limitation ang araw ka ng approach. Baka dya siya subo duman sa dokumento mismo. Pero if you take a look at the flow of the document, mahiling po nindu na nagpuon siya sa paglatag kung ano ang mga problemang inatubang ang Naga. In fact, the mayor started off with citing the Ateneo de Naga survey as a means of finding, of showing kung ano talaga ang pagmati kang mga constituentes kang Naga. So in the subsequent iterations of this process, we'll do better in presenting the highlights.
Thank you, Mr. Prilias, Honorable Del Rosario.
Yes, Sir Willie, I noted na may ano siya, na 'yung, actually, the mayor started off really with the Ateneo survey, but going 'yung one scale, one, ano, one step forward. Ang survey kaya is perception kang tao, singunyan. Singunyan. So kung ang biga address mo si garbage problem ngunyan, maisip ka ng problema para sa garbage, ano, problem. Ngunyan, dapat mas, mas ano kita dyan, mas diverse, mas move forward. Itong moving forward kita, mas proactive kita. Dahil lang kita dapat mag-isip na ambasyan kang dokumenta is 'yung survey. Kasi survey is based on perception. So ang planning ta dapat is more on what will happen sa masunod na mga five years, 10 years, or 15 years.
I fully agree, your honor.
Kasi kung survey based lang, Madam Chair, it's again perception based.
I agree, your honor, but if you'll take a look at chapter 3, mahiling po nindu na tinarahit ta si basis kang sa'to yang document. There are references to the sektoral challenges identified in our comprehensive development plan. References were made to the spatial challenges in the comprehensive land use plan. So, um, pagilin ko po, baka ang pagkukulang nilang is the way we presented the results of the document. Pero in terms of the process, essentially, na comply ni si requirements ng DILG, baka ang pagkukulang nilang is how we presented the document.
Actually, Sir Willie, binabasa ko ang mga documents kang city planning. And ikwa ko nabasa duman na the need for an ordinance sa night market operations. Yung sa slot, raus, binabasa ko siya. Kaya I really appreciate your efforts na bigtao ikd. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario. Honorable Gail Abonal Gomez.
Emphasize that the data here is a product of the workshop done. And part of the process of the workshop was to consult the different departments. Tama po, Sir Will. And during the workshop, atanda ko po suhaputwas ano ang current na ginigibo kang office, ano ang sahiling nindong kaipuhan pa. Ito po si duwan na big address. So I think the data is not solely dependent on the survey, which actually was conducted by the Ateneo de Naga, not for our purpose, but for the purpose of the, sa election survey po ito. Oo. So siguro para mabalanse, hinapot man po sumanga department heads. And then I remember we sat down with the particular cluster which we were concerned, and duman ninda po na raise to legislation. But I also agree with Counselor Del Rosario na kumihilinguntangan ni, harayo na maray po ang need pala for legislation concerning constituency assistance. So we can actually ask questions here. Ano tamas, dikito na maray ang para sa education and sa housing. Is it because there are already too many legislations on this? Or the nahihiling so need for more or further legislation? So pwede tapo, ako, I would ask, no? Baka pwedeng give us time? I agree also with Counselor Perez. Give us time, being in the legislative body, to prove more questions, and the questions that we might have can actually lead us to do further legislation. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Gail Abonal Gomez. So would you like us to? Oh, yes. There is a proposal of the Honorable Del Rosario that we can approve this now and then the next, next round of discussions during the Ella. Duman na kita maglaok itong proposal ni Gail Abonal Gomez and also the proposal of the Honorable Perez. So kasi, I...
That will be much appreciated, your honor, and we will make sure that we will do better in the next processes for these types of document.
Okay, thank you, Sir Willie. Okay, Honorable...
Collective motion, Madam Chair, we approve this.
On joint and collective motion, approve. Next item. Thank you, Mr. Prilias and the lady. Next item.
The report of the committee on health, sanitation, nutrition, and population.
Si sa pa. Ah, the, okay, before the report, patapusutan mo unilugod ang report ni ano? Report, dikit man lang, Garoya. Saro man lang na matter, saka na si ano.
Request for the acknowledgement of this report, Madam Chair.
Your report is acknowledged.
This is the report of the Committee on Health, Sanitation, Nutrition, and Population, conducted last November 22, 2022. There was no quarrel, Madam Chair. The business of the day, proposed, proposed ordinance authored by this representation, an ordinance converting the Naga City Hospital located barangay Pinapranse Naga City into a primary healthcare facility. May good record to the disposition, Madam Chair.
You may proceed, but first, there is no quarrel.
Albius, seconded by Honorable Mary Kail Prancin Trifulca. The committee resolved to elevate the Sangguniang Panglunsod as a committee on the whole to pass an ordinance converting the Naga City Hospital located barangay Pinapranse Naga City into a primary healthcare facility. I so move, Madam Chair.
So the Sangguniang is now convened as a committee of the whole. Any second to the proposal.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning and have a good day.
Before that, Honorable Del Castillo. Before that, honorable Del Castillo.
We will be converting the present Naga City Hospital into a primary healthcare facility. Um, as of now, the Naga City Hospital building, the bigger one, is still under construction. So, tapos siya operasional. So gusto bang sabihin, puputulunan na si operation ka Naga City Hospital sa Pinya Pransya. Because we are, will be converting ito a primary healthcare facility. Even if dinaga city hospital, the new one is not yet operasional. I think this should be, this should be, um, a definite stand on that particular matter. Because may magkakaigwa interignob.
Okay, so we ask that.
Kaya napot comadam chair, when will this conversion take effect?
So, the honorable Raniola.
This will take effect if we've already vacated the safe hospital.
Adaiman nunyan.
Because I have to sponsor this because the Department of Health is asking, requesting us. For a resolution that would show what are we going to put into that hospital vacated. So this is after the transfer already to the new hospital.
So, daiman iba man palang.
That's why, that's why I raised that issue madam chair. Kasi we are, we will be passing an ordinance. In the, once this ordinance is signed by the mayor, after passing it, signed by the mayor. If a publication is necessary, then after that publication, it will take effect. Kaya biga lilinaw ko lang na madam chair. So dapat siguro may provision dyan sa ordinance that this ordinance will take effect. Once dinaga city hospital, the new one is operasional. Kasi para mo marasy interignob.
Okay, councilor proponent, are you agreeable to the proposal?
Please include that, madam chair.
So that will be one of the provisions of the ordinance.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, that will be added, the secretary is so instructed. Approve, next item.
The report to the committee on housing and settlement.
Before that, pwede na si, baka halalaba ang housing. Let's go back to item number itong sa.
Number two of, number three, ano.
Number three, item number three. Item number three of SBO, itong si.
The request for reversion of the amount of twelve million forty-nine thousand plus.
Okay, there was a query, rules are suspended. Uh, we recognize the presence of the acting ESO head, baka pa ni. Itong sa Batang Pinoy, baka iyan.
Madam chair, earlier I manifested some concerns regarding item number four. Yung ESO about additional fund for the scholarship expenses. Then there was a mention in the document about the funding for Batang Pinoy to be held this December, I think this December. Sa Vigan, sa Ilocosur. We have Sir Pipin Aguilar, the acting Department of ESO, to enlighten us. Sir Pipin, ano 'yung mga details ito, 'yung mga items ito? Thank you.
Good morning to everyone, good morning madam chair, good morning to the honorable councillors of this body. I'd like to shed light on the item number four. Specifically regarding the scholarship expenses. And the other one is our budget for the Batang Pinoy competition to be held in Vigan City, Ilocosur. I'd like to start sa scholarship expenses po. So to date, uh, we have obligations to pay for the scholarship grants amounting to, paki. Yan, okay. So amounting to eight points, eight million seven hundred seventy-nine thousand one hundred seventy-five pesos. So this comprised six hundred eighteen scholars. Uh, date, ini po ang data pa na oobligate for this year. Specifically for the first semester, kasi po nasa first semester kita, beginning August until December this year. Uh, si budget ta po, our budget for twenty-twenty-two this year. Has already been consumed because of the previous obligations na nabayaran ta na po. And one factor of this, important factor is ito pong mga backlog in the previous year. So ang mangyayari pong nunyan with this, if we will not be able to pay for this until the end of the year. This is, this one, eight point seven million, so magiging backlog na namang po ini. And then we have to obligate this for the, and we have to charge this for the budget next year. So yun po kaya ang nangyayari every year, so may backlog, dahil nababayaran po before the year ends. And nakicarryover po siya dumans sa current budget for the preceding year. So, what I have suggested yesterday sa committee on appropriation hearing is to, yun nga ni po, mabayaran po ini. Uh, actually ang mga, the rakulang schools po digdi na, we really have to give priority. Uh, are the schools, Ateneo, Ateneo dinaga. Uh, Naga College Foundation, U S I and UNC. Si iba po sa radit namalang, but still, we have to pay for the scholarship grants. Uh, yun po, madam chair, sa scholarship program.
Honorable Del Rosario.
Yeah, you stated, Mr. Aguilar, that the semester started August. So why, why just wait now to ask sanggunian for additional appropriations?
The.
Kasi, again, you said na, pagnaitan rebayan nunyan, magiging obligasyon ta namang next year. Kung itinakong ni samoyong dokumenta ni September, then we could have acted on it. October, we could have acted on it. Why just wait for December, asking the sanggunian to augment the funds for this six hundred eighteen students? We do appreciate, madam chair, the efforts of ESO in consolidating. But ESO should not have waited this long. Um, ang sanggunian man, Mr. Aguilar, is ano ma kami, ready ma kami di, daw, minsan nagtagaanggut kami pero, ano po kami. Actually, aprobahan minu nunyan, ang gusto nilang ano, maging may, dapat may sense of urgency man kita. Um, sa department ta, na i-provide ini sa, sa city. You should have, ah, kuya, rang di alarm bell earlier. Siguro pagstart palang kan semester, you should have, I think ya, the ESO should have projected na mayor may, may problema kita kan ni. And the ass, siguro ass, sanggunian palos. Anyway, yako na dyan madam chair, thank you, Mr. Aguilar, for enlightening the sanggunian na palonsod. Next question, mapusid ba tayo, sir Pipin, kuya Pipin, di sa ano, sa Batang Pinoy? May, what's this Batang Pinoy program?
Yes, madam chair, we'll proceed with the Batang Pinoy, uh, sports competition in Vigan. In fact, uh, the necessary preparations had already been prepared by our sports division of ESO. Uh, we already have the delegation, uh, to be specific, uh. The Batang Pinoy competition will begin officially, ito pong mga games, uh, on, from December seventeen to twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two. But they, our delegation should depart, Batang departure puny das, should be next week, December thirteen, twenty-twenty-two. Uh. And, uh, ang athletes ta po, yung partang delegation ta, we have, to be exact, we have eighty-one athletes. And including the coaches. And then we have thirteen officials, officiating personnel coming from ESO. And ang total tapung sa delegation ta from the LGU Naga is ninety-four persons po, athletes and officials.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. So kung medyo nahori pa palang sarong simana ini, maduro man sida, mayong, mayong fans na. Anyway, madam chair, yako na dyan, siguro maging guidance sa lakas sa sa toyang ESO head ang araw ka ni para maanuman later. So madam chair, we, I move that we approve yung, yung item number four, as ano, in the letter. Thank you madam chair.
Thank you madam chair for the support.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. And then, on motion duly seconded, ibabali ni itong fourth item sa. Approve, next item, thank you, next, rules are resumed, next item.
Madam chair, before we forget, madam chair, can we go back to the previous item which was deferred? The matter of the one point eight million being requested as to the details. Item number. Two, SBO two, uh. Yeah, SBO two.
AOC, ano?
The letter of the honorable city mayor for reversion of the amount of twenty-four million four hundred ninety-nine thousand nineteen.
Three, three na.
Uh, the reversion of, a passage of an ordinance converting to an appropriated balance amount of twelve million forty-nine thousand six hundred fifty-five.
Yes, madam chair, earlier we requested for the details of the one point eight million. Which was the deficiency under the city mayor's office. Uh, bako po yan, SBO two.
SBO two, itong November twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two.
Yan, so, the one point eight million, the details of which was already provided. By the city budget officer, so can we just, can we flash? So, yan po, madam chair, si mga personnel, personnel involved and the salaries for their November and December. For the months of November and December. So, those are employees under the city mayor's office. All in all, they are ninety-two employees and kaipuan puning one point eight million for their November and December salary. Uh, which may ipapung punto. So, with that, madam chair, my questions have already been answered. So madam chair, kung may naman pong other questions from the plenary.
Okay, honorable Castillo.
May item dyan madam chair na, pero sa ESO may kulang, they're asking for another six hundred thousand. So, um, what necessitate the deficiency of around six hundred thousand? Um, si original, original appropriation, original appropriation is, one hundred fifty-eight?
One fifty-nine.
One fifty-nine?
Five hundred eleven.
Five hundred eleven. Pero ang requirement nya is.
Six hundred eighty-two.
Yes. Um, gusto mo sabihan, dahil big, dahil big consider si available fund sa paghire ng tao. That's the, that's the logical conclusion, madam chair. So, paano siya nakagibunin kontrata na mayon ng available fund? That cannot be, that cannot be done because appointment, uh, should be, should also be, um, accompanied by availability of funds. You cannot just appoint somebody without the necessary appropriations. So yun, yun ang basically napot comad, dyan madam chair. Pero nag hire kita, pero mayon palang kita ang pambayad. And now here comes, si request, nagagad ng pambayad. Pero, big, appoint na si tao, sabagay may kasabihan na, mahanap nga kontrabaho, dahil kaya man big sabi na, susweldo anta ka. But, since we are talking of government funds, madam chair. Um, uh, we should follow the rule in government. That we cannot just appoint somebody without first securing that the funds is available for that particular employee. There might, this might happen again. I'm not comfortable of approving it now, unless we got an assurance that this will not happen again. And who will assure us?
I'm not the mayor. Sa opisino pa gayan, bakun sa opisino yang kang mayor. Bako isa'to.
Pwede, madam chair, kung papabayaan talang ini, uh, we are, we are violating existing accounting and auditing rules. Which is prescribed under PD fourteen forty-five.
Can we defer this now for the next session? Defer na.
We should defer this and.
Yes, can we defer this for the next session?
Yes, madam chair.
Para maliwanagan kita. And then the issues raised, the concern raised by the honorable Del Castillo will be answered.
Uh, honorable Del Castillo, it appears, madam chair, the same case is observed with the city mayor's office. Na may mga employees charged therein na may ipalan sa budget. So, kung may, ako po kaya may naman ang question, pero kung may question pa si. Honorable Del Castillo, I defer to his.
Thank you honorable Rosales, honorable Del Castillo.
It's basic, in hiring for government positions, whether it is regular, casual, or contractual. There should first be an appropriation to cover the salaries or wages or honoraria of such employee. Before we can sign the contract or an appointment, put the purpose. Thank you madam chair.
Thank you honorable Del Castillo, honorable Del Rosario.
To answer the, yung premise ni councillor Del Castillo, madam chair. There should be first a budget or an appropriation. Actually, madam chair, tama siya, because igwa man budget, madam chair, ng mayor's office. Nagkatao lang na nagkulang, kaya po nag-aano kita, nag, madagdag kita, kasi nagkulak siya, nagdag. Ang, ang pangit lang, madam chair, kung he started sa, kung bakas ano, na mayo lamang dokument. Nagkatao may dokument man eh, may initial funding eh. So nagkatao lang na nagkulang, kaya the executive now is asking the sanggunian to, to consider yung, yung, yung additional appropriation to cover. So, telekom, madam chair, that also answers yung question ni, unless ku ta na kung mayo siya, basically, kung mayo siya, nagpuon siya mayo. Then nagpar hire siya, dyan talas siya pwedeng, ano ni, ni questionon, however, ini kaya nagkulang. Nagkulang lang.
Tinimbang ka kuna.
So siguro, madam chair, we can approve this now, we can approve this now.
Honorable Del Castillo, thank you honorable Del Rosario.
Are approving an annual budget. And based on the annual budget, its OPs have already determined how many personnel are needed. That's why, kunigwa ni, halimbawa may appropriation kang two million. For, uh, other general services. That's, that's the amount appropriated for hiring job order employees. Kunigwa ka janing two million, the two million is being. Kung igwakan dyan 'yung 2 million, that 2 million is being apportioned for the monthly payment for each and every employee for the whole year, including other benefits. That's the basic in budgeting. Nagba-budget ka for the whole year. That's why I'm questioning why igwakan lang 'yung that much, pero nag-hire ka rin sobra. Gusto sabihin, si ibangong pig-hire, dahil na-covering appropriation. Because the appropriation is good for one year.
Baka based on ano, bakun man sa rabay na pig-hire.
Hindi, Madam Chair. That's why I, what I'm saying is, based on the budget, pira lang ang pwede mong i-hire. Kung mahire ka, dapat dagdagan mo si punto mo. Not at the end of the year, sakakamaagad ng kadagdagan. Because you have already hired. Mayo ka palang pansweldo, no'ta nag-hire ka. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo, Honorable Del Rosario.
Yes, Madam Chair, we experienced that already sa mga previous dispensation. The Sanggunean was very, was very empathic on this aspect. I could recall, Councilor Del Castillo was really empathic on this aspect. And some of the other members of the Sanggunean. However, we also request, we also respect 'yung authority of the Executive Department na 'yung needs ng offices, ng various offices under the Executive Department should be also resolved and acted upon. The only problem is, Madam Chair, igwang funding, nagkulang lang, so they're asking now the Sanggunean for us to consider. So this representation, Madam Chair, is amenable on... There is a motion for this approval today. Pero with the, with the, ano, with again repetition of this concern, na i-addressed ta sa Office of the Mayor. Ang City Administrator, mabaga Madam Chair, halimman Sanggunean, probably he understands 'yung position ng Sanggunean. We will strongly reflect our sentiment sa communication na ipapadarata man sa ina na they should also consider, kung ano lang 'yung budget, they should work on it.
We return this to the City Mayor?
No, Madam Chair, I think kung may mga opposition, siguro, we can approve this today.
We are proposing for the...
Approve of this item, Madam Chair, today.
So those who are in favor for the submotion, Honorable Del Rosario, that we approve this now? Any second? No, second. Any... So you're abstaining, but you're not disapproving it. So this is, this matter is approved with the note that the Honorable Del Castillo is abstaining. Next item, number three palang kita. Yes, and also the note of the Honorable Del Rosario.
The report of the Committee on Housing and Settlements.
Honorable Albios.
Good morning, Madam Chair. May I request acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on Housing and Settlements?
Your request, your committee is...
The committee hearing was held on November 28, 2022, and there was a quorum. The first item taken was the second endorsement dated November 16, 2022 of His Honor, the City Mayor, forwarding the follow-up letter of Ida F. Kito on their intent to purchase the right-of-way of lots 52, 53, and 54 of Block 11 of the Consolidated Subdivision Survey by TCT Number 40911, 40912, and 40916 located in San Mateo Street, Penyafrancia, D.C. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
The first disposition, on motion of Honorable Salvador and Del Castillo, duly seconded by Honorable Vidal P. Castillo, Honorable Hill Rosales, and Purong Barangay Elisa Carmona, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglongsood to defer consideration on the matter pending the compliance of the procedural requirements needed for the intent to purchase of the right-of-way of lots 52, 53, and 54 of Block 11 of the Consolidated Subdivision Survey by TCT Number 40911, 40912, and 40916 located in San Mateo Street, Penyafrancia, D.C. by conducting a public hearing. So move, Madam Chair. Second disposition is to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglongsood to direct the Housing Settlement Development Office to seek the assistance of the Purong Barangay Penyafrancia for the holding of the public hearing on December 12, 2022 and inform the Sangguneang Panglongsood the time and venue for such public hearing. So move, Madam Chair. Second item taken was letter dated November 7, 2022 of Ms. Socorro Fruevel, Homeowners Association President, Johnville Subdivision Phase 1, requesting for the reduction of the price of the lot awarded to them. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
On motion of Honorable Salvador and Del Castillo, duly seconded by Honorable Hill Rosales and Mr. Danilo Lodovise, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglongsood to direct the City Appraisal Committee to conduct an appraisal on the property of the Johnville Phase 1 and submit their appraisal report within seven days upon receipt hereof. So move, Madam Chair.
Any second?
Second disposition, on motion of Honorable Hill G. Rosales, duly seconded, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglongsood to direct the Housing and Development Office to submit their reply or comment and/or recommendations regarding the request of the Johnville Phase 1 Homeowners Association. So move, Madam Chair.
Any second?
That ends my report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Albios. Next item.
The report of the joint hearing of the Committees on Appropriations and Loss Ordinances and Reorganization.
We will render the report. The Honorable Albios.
Madam Chair, may I request for the acknowledgement of the joint committee report of the Committee on Appropriations and Committee on Loss Ordinances and Reorganization?
Your report is acknowledged.
The committee hearing was held on November 28, 2022, and there was a quorum. The only matter taken was the proposed ordinance authored by Honorable Hill Rosales regulating the charging of unpaid obligation from prior years against the current appropriation and prescribing the requirements prior to the authorization by the Sangguneang Panglongsood. May I proceed to the disposition, Madam Chair?
You may proceed.
On motion of Honorable Hill Rosales, duly seconded by Honorable Melvin Ramon G. Benafé and Mr. L. Marti Santo Domingo, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglongsood to direct the City Budget Officer and the Acting City Accountant to submit their comments and/or recommendation on the proposed ordinance by Honorable Rosales within seven days upon receipt hereof. So move, Madam Chair.
Any second?
That ends my report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Honorable Albios. Next item.
The report of the Committee on City Properties.
Committee on City Properties, Honorable Del Castillo, Chair.
Proceed. I move for the acknowledgement of the report of the Committee on City Properties.
Your report is acknowledged.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is the committee report of the Committee on City Properties, held on November 18, 2022. Item number one is later dated October 17 of Albin G. Richto, Acting Caretaker of the Naga City Public Cemetery recommending the passage of an ordinance prohibiting the burial of non-city resident in the public cemetery. There was lengthy discussion on the matter, Madam Chair. And here is our disposition. The committee resolved to defer deliberation on the matter and request Engineer Martin and Mr. Richto to submit their comments and submit relevant data that could be included in the ordinance that will be enacted. So I move, Madam Chair, that we direct our secretary to communicate with Engineer Martin and Mr. Richto to sporneze us of the necessary data so that we can already prepare the proposed ordinance on the matter. So move, Madam Chair. Item number two is later dated August 10, 2022 of Engineer Alex Kaning, Acting City Engineer, submitting the revised technical description of the donated lot for the PNP Substation Number 2. Disposition, the committee resolved to defer consideration of the matter pending the submission of the City Engineers' Office of the Mission Bound of the property which is subject to be donated to the Philippine National Police. And another recommendation, Madam Chair, is to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglongsood to pass a new resolution authorizing the City Mayor to renegotiate with the Philippine National Police for the amendment with respect to the area subject of the donation previously, subject of the donation. Actually, Madam Chair, we have already passed the necessary resolution authorizing the mayor to donate a property to the Philippine National Police, which will be the site of the Police Station Number 2. But there are some changes that should be made because some area traversed the, or is being traversed by the right-of-way of the National Grid Corporation of the Philippines. So medyo delikado, Madam Chair, na may makatungod na particular building duman sa right-of-way kan na inGCP dahil heightened yun wire iyan. Grabe ang radiation ka yan, and delikado sa mga ma-occupy kan building. That's why nag-suggest ang City Engineers' Office na mabago si configuration kan luti na malikayan si itong portion na pigagihan kan right-of-way kan National Grid Corporation of the Philippines. That's why we should also, although we are recommending that we authorize the mayor and yet, pag-abot duman the final deed of donation, dapat yaon na si itong bagong mission bound kan si new location of the Police Station Number 2 of the Naga City Police Office. So with that, Madam Chair, I move that we pass the necessary resolution authorizing the mayor to renegotiate with the Philippine National Police on the said donation. But since the donation itself is subject to ratification, the deed of donation should wait for the technical, actual technical description that will be submitted by the City Engineers' Office based on their survey.
Any second? Okay, approve. Next.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Item number three is Resolution Number 11-145 Series of 2022 from Barangay Penyafrancia. Resolution asking the Honorable City Mayor Legasyon through the Sangguneang Panglongsood of Naga to donate a certain property located at Sunto San Cago, Barangay Penyafrancia, Naga City. Disposition, the committee resolved to recommend to the Sangguneang Panglongsood to pass a resolution giving the city's consent to the DPWA for the construction of a multi-purpose building at Barangay Penyafrancia, Naga City. Madam Chair, we deem it necessary that we pass this resolution so that the DPWA can already prepare the necessary program works and include the same in their program. The consent of the city is necessary for this particular matter since we already constructed a daycare center in the area, but it will be improved through the construction of another building through the DPWA. So with that, Madam Chair, I move that we pass the necessary resolution giving the city's consent for the use of the said property as multi-purpose building at Barangay Penyafrancia.
Any second? I approve.
And the... Next item, Madam Chair, is the capi of Resolution Number 11-145 Series of 2022 of Barangay Penyafrancia. Resolution asking the Honorable City Mayor to the Sangguneang Panglongsood to donate certain property located at Sun 7 Sagrada Familia, Barangay Penyafrancia, Naga City. Disposition, the committee resolved to take note of Barangay Resolution Number 11-145 asking the City Government of Naga to donate certain property located at Sagrada Familia, Barangay Penyafrancia, considering that such donation is ratified if the city would initiate the construction of the proposed evacuation center. Pwede, Madam Chair, gusto ninday donate pa sa Barangay Penyafrancia, pero ang maga-stoman lang kan building na ito tugdok na evacuation center, City Government of Naga. So dahil nakinakae pong idunar pa kan tsudad, dahil tsudad nga anehan ma-pagibukan evacuation center. So we just take note of the matter, Madam Chair.
So noted?
Yes, just noted. So that ends my report, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Del Castillo. Next item.
The report of the joint hearing of the Committees on Loss, Ordinances and Reorganization and People Empowerment.
Honorable Rosales, Chair of the Committee.
May I move for the acknowledgement of the report of the Committees on Loss in Ordinances and People Empowerment? Since there was no quorum, Madam Chair, may I also move that the plenary be converted as a committee of the whole?
The Sanggunean is now converted as a committee of the whole.
The first item, Madam Chair, is the proposed ordinance of this representation entitled "An Ordinance Promoting Individual Citizen's Participation in Naga City's Legislative Process: Establishing Mechanisms for Its Enhancement and Appropriating Funds Thereof." Madam Chair, since the committee is already converted as a committee of the whole, may I be allowed to present this proposed ordinance for the final disposition of the body and for its approval on second reading? So I actually prepared a presentation of the proposed ordinance. The ordinance is entitled "An Ordinance Promoting Individual Citizen's Participation in Naga City's Legislative Process: Establishing Mechanisms for Its Enhancement and Appropriating Funds Thereof." This was actually filed during the 13th Sangguneang Panglongsood. Originally, it was a measure proposed by the students of the Atenea de Naga College of Law. And I have refiled it again as subject to some modifications to which the result, to which resulted from the consultations from various stakeholders, the NCPC, the comments from the JMR Center for Good Governance, and other stakeholders. So kumbaga ini pong the file ko, the 14th Sanggunean, is already a consolidation of the comments which was already taken up during the 13th Sangguneang Panglongsood. So on the first part, next slide please. Ang pinaka-proposed ka ang proposed ordinance basically is to provide a venue for participation for individual citizens. At present, Madam Chair, only accredited organizations are formally allowed to participate in the legislative process of the Sanggunean through the Naga City People's Council, where they nominate or elect representatives from accredited civil society organizations of the Sangguneang Panglongsood. Through this ordinance, mechanisms will be established to allow individual citizens. They no longer need to be members or part of accredited civil society organizations to be able to participate in the city's legislative process. So ang nakalag po, a mechanism shall be established to provide citizens an avenue to convey comments, objections, recommendations, or suggestions, of course, for consideration by the members of the Sanggunean and its committees on proposed measures filed, whether in the plenary or committee level. So next slide, please. So the first part of the enhanced... So, the first part of the enhanced legislative process would be the publication of proposed resolutions and ordinances. Ang nakalagpo, all measures filed for first reading and referred to respective committees for further study and recommendations shall be shared and/or posted within three days after the conduct of the regular session. So, ipost, she-share ang mga proposed resolutions and ordinances through the following measures. So, tulupo, first, either of the three, they po necessarily all of it, either of the three. The first mode is through the posting in the webpage or social media platforms already existing in the city government, or in public information boards, emails, and such other means using information and communications technology that would ensure wide dissemination. The second would be providing printed or soft copies to the 27 barangays of Naga through assigned... through their assigned focal persons who shall be in charge of posting it in the barangays information board or social media page to solicit comments and suggestions, or through community dialogues with concerned sectors. The third would be, when feasible, a radio program or segment maintained by the city government where the proponent or anchor may discuss. So, kumbaga sa radio po. So, iyan po ang tulong modes of publication to be incorporated in the enhanced legislative process of the Sangguneang Panglongsood. Next slide please. So, the next would be, the next component would be, the conduct of committee hearings or public hearings. The said letter provides that "Proposed measures referred to committees shall not be scheduled for hearing unless there is compliance of at least one of the means of publication." Ito pong pag-post sa webpage, pag-providing copy sa barangay, or through segments in the radio, as mentioned in the previous section. So, no committee hearing to be scheduled unless there is compliance of at least one of the foregoing means of publication, and earnest efforts have been made to seek feedback from concerned sectors and constituents. After the said consultation or posting in the said webpage or social media platforms, a consolidated feedback report will be provided to all the members of the respective committee where such measure was referred to before the scheduled hearing, and shall officially be attached to each committee report when rendered before the plenary. So, si mga naconsolidate po na feedback would be already included during the committee report where such measure was deferred. Okay, next slide please. So, the next part would be the requirement of a valid justification. So, in case there is noncompliance with the requirement of publication and consultation. So, pag may proposed measure, as earlier mentioned, there is a requirement to post it, to consult it, earnest efforts to seek feedback from constituents or concerned sectors, and before the conduct of the committee meeting. But in case there is noncompliance, a valid justification shall be included in the committee report, and in case the Sangguneang Panglongsood, as a plenary, deems it necessary to conduct a consultation or consolidate feedback first, a simple majority may vote to return the matter to the committee. So, as read, Madam Chair, a valid justification shall be included in the committee report if there was noncompliance of the requirement of publication and consultation. The simple majority may vote to return the matter to the committee. So, next, next part, next item. So, also, this this proposed ordinance shall require all proposed... Oh, no, not all proposed, all approved. All approved measures and reports, or all approved ordinances, resolutions, and reports to be posted in the city's website in a PDF, searchable PDF format, where it can be searched and downloaded in an accessible online database. At the present, Madam Chair, we know that in the city's website, only selected ordinances are posted. Resolutions are not posted there. Committee reports are not posted there. So, in this, this proposed ordinance requires already that all resolutions, ordinances, and committee reports be posted in the city's website. And the last part would be the live streaming of committee hearings and public hearings. At present, we have the the Sangguneang Panglongsood sessions, regular sessions streamed live. This proposed ordinance shall enhance it further to make committee hearings and public hearings also live in the social media platforms of the city government or the Sangguneang Panglongsood. So, iyan po si magiging garo enhanced legislative process as incorporated in this proposed ordinance. So, next slide please. A personal requirement, to ensure the effective implementation of this ordinance, the position of citizens engagement officer, or more specifically, under the occupational standards provided by the human resources offices, the position of local legislative officer one with salary grade 11 is hereby created within the SP Secretariat to perform the following functions. Siya na po ang ma-insure that the publication would be would be made within three days of all proposed measures filed within the first reading. So, siya namat pa ma-coordinate with the necessary offices such as IGOV and CEPO. The next work would be to coordinate with the 27 barangays for the purpose of designating focal persons who would also be assigned to conduct the consultations in concerned sectors within respective, within their respective barangays. Conduct of community dialogues with the purpose of soliciting feedback on, on proposed measures when necessary. The third would be the establishment of an inventory of subscribers who would prefer to regularly receive through electronic email all proposed measures for their feedback. Next slide please. The next responsibility of the said officer would be, aside sa posting, aside sa coordinating with the barangay, he will be the one to consolidate all the feedback and timely submit the report to the committee chairperson and members concerned at least three days before the scheduled committee hearing. So, the next would be, siya namat po ang incharge sa pag-arrangting radio interviews or news delivery means when necessary. And have posted, siya po ang incharge sa posting kang gabos na ordinances, resolutions, committee reports in the city's website in a searchable PDF format. The next would be ensure that all committee hearings, public hearings, as well as the existing structure of the live streaming of regular sessions would be livestreamed. And act as the secretariat to the I Engage Council, which would be created through this ordinance. The next slide please. So, the I Engage Council, this will be decomposition, the city mayor, NCPC, chairperson, SP chairperson of the Committee of People Empowerment, the executive director of JMR Center for Good Governance, SK Fed, Ligan ng Mga Barangay President, representative from the Ateneo College of Law, and other offices, institutions, organizations upon invitation by the I Engage Council. The next slide. So, ano pa magiging trabaho kang I Engage Council? They will be the one to formulate a plan. If, within three months, they shall formulate the I Engage Plan, which will be the basis of the funding which will be needed, in case we will be needing additional equipment for the purpose or the other projects, plans, and activities for the further implementation of this ordinance. So, within three months, they shall make the I Engage Plan to identify the needed resources, the timeframe for the full implementation of the ordinance. Conduct regularly meetings to oversee the implementation of the ordinance. Initiate surveys, independent reviews that could generate data to promote people participation and inclusive governance. Propose policy amendments to improve the provisions and objectives of the ordinance, other functions necessary. Next slide please. Aso may na. So, the last part of the ordinance would be the funding. The funding will be based on the I Engage Plan to be submitted to the Sangguneang Panglongsood for approval. So, basically, that would be the the version of this representation on the proposed measure submitted by the by the Ateneo College of Law. In fact, in the explanatory note, I've mentioned that this proposed ordinance is actually a submitted ordinance from our constituents for, for enhanced people participation and good governance. So, for the questions, Madam Chair.
Honorable Del Rosario.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good afternoon. Thank you, Councilor Rosales, for that presentation. Madam Chair, this presentation supports some of the provisions of the legislative agenda being espoused by Attorney Rosales. However, I have certain reservations. Number one, we... I think we need to amend 'yung ating internal rules sa procedures ng ano, pagka... Pagka ano na mga resolutions and ordinances, ano. Because duma po sa, sa toing internal rules, very specific si ano ta. Si pag nag-submit sa first reading, ibaba sa committee, committee reports generate, and the chair renders the report. If the body approves it on second reading, the next session, the approval sa third and final reading. If there'll be amendments sa periods, kasi may big discuss dumaan, Madam Chair, si Councilor Rosales of the periods. May, may naila ko dyan na three days. Baka may impact maninid dumaan sa, sa ano kang mga committees na pigka kokoyanta. I suggest, Madam Chair, na i-present ni Attorney, ni Councilor Rosales, 'yung 'yung, kumbaga sa ano, garo graphical approach para mahilingta kung paano malaoob si citizens' participation dumaan sa sa ano. Number two, Madam Chair, may worry lang ako. Kasi, baka igwaning baka manigbi sa Sangguneang Panglongsood kan Naga, pero itao ko lang ng garo ano lang ano. Eventually, baka may mga resolutions or proposals na magbuktak ng funding, 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 just for the sake na mabasa kan community na may proposal araw gani. And later on, aram naman na dahil man maaprubahan kang Sangguneang because of the constraints on the funding. Maging amang, magluwas lugod kontrabida ang Sangguneang Panglongsood, ma-kontrabida ang office of the mayor. So, garo kabyat lang siya, kabyat lang siya na there should be certain limitations man sa sa, siguro may buktak dyan ni Councilor Rosales. Certain limitations of 'yung ano ni. Kasi habutang, maghabutang, although kulat, ano kita, collective body kita, diverse ang mga opinions ta, pero habutang, maghabutang panahon na mabo-bombard kita ni mga suggestions. Kasi, di ba, naka-outline sa koyanta na pagbaba sa committee ipost within three days, ipost, yang dyan sa ano, shall be shared and/or posted within three days after the conduct of such regular session through the following means, 'yung kuyan na yan. Baka mabombard ni mga suggestions, then dahil na, date na akturan si mga suggestions, madipit si si people's participation concept. Magluas na dahil naging participatory, dahil naging dahil kita naging reflective kan sentiments kan tao. Kita kaya, Madam Chair, nailinta ang mas nakulang perspective si limitations sa funding, et cetera, et cetera. However, ito mga, bakunggayong, involve ito mga funding, ano, for example, mga institutional development sa human resource, pwede siguro ito. Pero pag-abot dumaan to mga impra, baka maghabutang panahon na maging, maging kontrabida kita. So, balikan ko lang, Madam Chair, I suggest ni, ano ni Councilor Rosales, ako ay, ay subscribe dumaan sa ibang mga provisions na big list ako. Itong mga na-approved siguro, mas okay ito, si mga na-approved sa ano ta, kasi igwamang kitang very active na CEPO. Then, kung paano malaoob dumaan sa amendment kang rules ta, Madam Chair, itong mga araw ganing ano. Number two, Madam Chair, igwamang kitang makusugo na Naga City People's Council eh. So, ano si participation kan Naga City People's Council dumaan sa I Engage Council, mas actually, nauma ko, Madam Chair, kasi narereflect ni Councilor Rosales, itong pig-suggest ko during the committee hearing na function kan si I Engage Council. Yung malayan, Madam Chair, ansa ko yang reservation.
Thank you, Honorable Del Rosario, the proponent. Honorable, do you have a question? Another?
Just a... To respond, siguro, Madam Chair, dumaan sa suggestion before the other comments, I will present a graphical, siguro, para mas maintindian, because I only discuss it verbally, or see, I only show the provision of the ordinance. So, para siguro mas ma-inlighten ang members ka plenary, I will just show a graphical presentation on the enhanced legislative process, considering the timelines and the requirements involved during the committee deliberation or consideration of proposed measures filed. Also, the other comments and suggestions of the Honorable Del Rosario as to the first, ito pong amendment of the rules, I think it would come once the ordinance will be approved. We, we shall necessarily amend our internal rules. The next would be the, siguro, the reservation on the posting of proposed measured, measures, measures filed. Sayiling ko po, Madam Chair, may man yatang problema if we will be posting proposed measures filed. In fact, Madam Chair, even in the Congress, House bills are posted in their website. Si mga, mga representatives of mga congressmen, their proposed measures are posted in the, in the website of the, of the Congress. So, similarly, we work the same way in the legislative branch of government. Our proposed measures would also be reflected as part of our performance as our responsibility to our constituents.
Okay, Honorable Del Rosario.
We go back to the main title, Councilor, 'yung promoting individual citizens. So, we define sa ina-start ang citizens' participation sa legislation. So, isip ta, 'yung pag naka-file na ba kita, then saka si na ma-comment, or they can, they can, they can on their own, on his or her own, can, can submit the legislations. Kasi, naka, naka na sa title, Madam Chair, promoting individual citizens' participation, establishing mechanisms. So, siguro, I'll ask a clarification from the proponent, kunsa in ma-start si citizens' participation.
Yes, to answer, Madam Chair, the the individual citizens' participation will begin once the proposed measures, measure is filed and posted within three days after the conduct of the regular session. On that certain period before the conduct of the committee meeting, the officer will consolidate all the comments received through the website and social media and be submitted to the committee members three days before the conduct of the committee meeting for their consideration during the committee deliberation on the proposed measure. So, during the committee level, before papoyan, i-present for second reading sa plenary.
Madam Chair, there would, kung araw ganyan, there would be an extension sa mga timelines na piglalamag dumaan. For example, 'yung ano, 'yung sa apro in other committees na may mga piglalamag kitang mga timelines na, so... Oo, oo. Si koyan, oo. Iyon lang yan, Madam Chair. Pero ako, Madam Chair, I really subscribe to this, 'yung initiative ng, saka naubal ako, Madam Chair, sa ignorance kan si Ateneo Group, ano, na pig-reflex man nga ni, pagalan man ni Attorney Rosale. Kailan, para sa enhancement lang, hilimta kung paano to maano. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Honorable.
Madam Chair, just a response, a response before Counselor Jopero and Counselor Badi. Igopong nakalag na exception, kasi there would be cases na urgent action would be requested from the Sangguneang. So, valid justification would suffice during the committee report in case there is noncompliance with the posting requirement or the timeline requirement as to be provided in this ordinance. as, ah, to be provided in this ordinance. Ah, like ah, as, as mentioned earlier, ah, if the Sangguniang Panglongsood ah sa plenary ah consider the matter urgent, ah, then they, they can ah do away with, with the requirement. Only that if majority thinks that we should conduct a, a consultation or feedback mechanism as provided in the ordinance, ah, they can vote to return it to the committee to the, for the conduct of the said consultation.
Honorable Del Castillo, and then Honorable Perez. One o'clock.
Four minute before one o'clock. And I ah, I'm sure that ah this matter cannot be disposed today. So I think ah we should already, we should terminate temporarily discussion of the matter and schedule this for ah another ah, ah regular session because I, for one, have so many ah query. So with that, Madam Chair, I move that we ah terminate ah today's discussion on this matter and ah move to ah for our lunch break.
Matalaga 'yun ah. So, thank you, Honorable Del Castillo, lunch break. Iba na talaga ang hilig ko sa'yo.